Jason Carter.
Here.
Dennis Miller.
Here.
Angela Woodward.
Here.
Here.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening again and welcome everyone to the June 4th meeting of the Ashland City Council. To our viewers and our audience, thank you for joining us this evening. Members of council, Mayor Miller, Attorney Bush, Director Paxton, welcome all. First item on the agenda this evening will be the approval of the minutes from the May 21st meeting. If there are no additions, deletions, or corrections to those minutes, I'll ask for a motion to approve as submitted.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
Minutes will stand approved. First ordinance this evening will be an ordinance authorizing the Director of Finance to amend appropriations for the calendar year 2024 and declaring an emergency.
Move for non-reading in full.
Second.
Thank you.
Woodward. Aye. Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Good evening. The ordinance that you have before this evening is a tweaking of the estimated revenues of the city for this calendar year. There were adjustments, as you knew, in the, within the 24 appropriations. There was a consolidation of a lot of lines in an effort to get the line, number of lines within the appropriations combined into similar services or activities. Anytime you do that, why, there's always adjustments that have to be made in order to tweak that because just when you think that you've allocated enough money for a particular activity based on what you spent last year, that never pans out to be exactly what it is. So there are a lot of adjustments within these appropriations in an effort to tweak them for that consolidation. This is not new money. This is the estimates of where we think that we will end the year as far as revenues and appropriating that monies to help fill those lines. Everything that we spend is based on of cash flow, of what we have available in those funds to spend. Most of this, a lot of it is general fund and there are no real big ticket items in here except for one where we had the good fortune, the county permissive tax. I believe that we, the mayor may have mentioned, we wanted to use some of that for paving. That was held by the county. It is collected and then dispersed to the county, or from the county to the city as we need it. And the engineer asked for that. And so that's probably the biggest ticket item of which I believe, I don't know for sure, but I believe that that's going to be used for streets, street resurfacing for permissive tax monies. So other than that, it's more of a tweaking. It does look like a rather large number, except for the sewer fund on the second page. The sewer fund unfortunately has some rather large projects coming up. There are some things that have to be, we have to front the money. That is cash that the sewer fund was holding in an effort to do some improvements. We have to make a, put and install a new line, sewer line on US 250 East. We also have to do some mandated stormwater retention projects as well as begin the design of our new EQ basin, which is a part of also a EPA requirement. So.
So that's part of that capital outlay of a million five.
That's the capital outlay, yes, a million and a half in an effort to go and prepare for that. This doesn't get the ball wrong, it just applies the funding so that that can come to you, I believe, in the very near future.
Larry, I was just curious why the city provided insurance is on three different lines, one being, or it's separated on the first page there. We've got 15, 15, and 200.
Yeah. We have calculated what, based off the population of employees, what each of those lines will need. And that's why it's city provided insurance that we have, have to pay on behalf of our employees to insure, health insurance is what it is, or HRAs. So in trying to estimate that as best we can. Now, the premium cost is one thing, the HRA cost is an unknown number, okay? Because if they, if someone happens to get sick, the city has to, every Friday we get a invoice from the insurance company for the HRA cost. That is an unknown number. We hope that our employees are safe and healthy, but when they do get sick, why, we do provide health insurance to them, so we're trying to estimate that as best we can.
Yep.
Okay?
Thank you. Any other questions or concerns for Mr. Paxton?
Is the, is the softener repaired done? Or is there money in this appropriation that represents the, I don't believe it's a part of this appropriation? Okay, it's not in here, okay.
That has already been allocated.
Okay.
For that repair. We actually created a purchase order.
Okay.
Made out to the city in an effort to earmark that $800,000 to replace that or repair that water softener. That has not begun yet. Last time I talked to Mr. Hunter, which has been a month or so ago, I believe they were waiting on a permit to install, maybe you would.
And I believe we still are.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that's the holdup, we.
I just knew that was happening this year and I just wanted to.
Yeah. It's a good question.
I didn't see a number big enough.
Yeah.
Once that 1.5 is chewed up, I didn't see a number big enough to cover that.
Different fund, but yeah, absolutely.
Gotcha.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve on the first reading?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
I'll move to suspend the rules for three separate readings, three separate days.
Second.
Thank you.
Workman.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
Motion to approve the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Kyle.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye.
Ordinance 37-24.
And next we have an ordinance authorizing and directing the Director of Finance to make the following transfers within the 2024 appropriations and declaring an emergency.
Move for non-reading in full.
Second.
Thank you.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
This is a much different ordinance in the fact that you have already appropriated this monies at the beginning of the year, or I believe this is the first time we've amended the appropriations for so far this year. But anyways, this money on the left side was appropriated by you. This is an effort to meet some of those needs on the right side of the spreadsheet in an effort to keep those lines from falling short and provide the funding needed for those different departments.
What exactly are we refunding?
Pardon me?
The refunds, what exactly are we refunding?
The refunds are actually income tax refunds.
Okay.
Yeah. We budgeted, I believe, about $480,000 this year in income tax refunds. And I believe at this point, we're running, I just signed some earlier this evening. I think we're about over $200,000 now. On that. We don't anticipate spending all that, hopefully. But again, it depends on how the returns are filed, what they're claiming, what they are eligible for as far as a refund. Anything that is not spent in that refund line, as well as the rest of the cost in the income tax department, if it is not spent, it is directly diverted into the general fund in the parks and street. Anything that is not used in that goes into those funds if it's allocated to them.
Very good, thank you.
Larry, I hate to belabor this, but so each city paid insurance line with the same account number represents a different department?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
The first three digits of each of those lines represents a different fund.
Thank you.
Yeah. The 202 is the street fund, the 212 is the park, and 244 is the transit. The 250 is the court or probation department, and then the income tax department is the last department.
I was looking at the other appropriations and I thought, oh, wait a minute, that goes all the way down the sheet.
Yeah, pretty much, yeah. And again, the HRA is an unknown factor.
Right.
And we have no control over that. If someone were to get sick, we have to provide that funding.
Sure.
That is not a part of their insurance, that is above and beyond that, that the city does fund.
On their behalf.
On their behalf, yes.
That is a generous thing for the city to do. A lot of places, I would, I would imagine, would ask the employee, how are you going to pay these premiums while you're off? Am I correct?
Any health insurance benefit is a costly benefit to any business.
Yeah.
But to re-tac, re-tract, attract and retain good and qualified employees, it is a very much needed benefit in these day and stages.
Okay, well, thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, is there a motion to pass on the first reading?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Workman.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
Again, I'll move to suspend the rules for three separate readings, three separate days.
Second.
Thank you.
Kyle.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye.
Motion to approve the ordinance?
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you.
Miller.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Ordinance 38-24.
All right. Moving down the agenda here, we have no resolutions, no public hearing items, no old business or new business unless council has something to bring forward. With that, then we'll move right to the Finance Director's report.
The only thing that I have to report is we have filed the, excuse me, we have filed the financial papers for 2024 with the State Auditor's Office. They are now in the process of completing that audit, which hopefully will be done within the next few weeks. The financials have to be filed first and then the audit of those papers comes afterwards.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Council comments, Mr. Lawson, would you like to go first?
Well, we've been handling the financial business, I just want to say thank you to Mr. Paxton. If you watch, he carries around a three-ring binder that's about three inches thick, and that's our budget, our appropriations. And when he sends it to us, it's like 120 pages long with about 80 lines of budget on every page, so it's a massive amount of stuff. So I appreciate you being diligent enough to bring these changes and corrections and new appropriations to us. It's a hard job, I'm sure.
As well as answering our questions.
Right, 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 so.
I look at finances as not to direct what a city does, that is a mirror show in your job. Mine is to try to provide as much funding as we possibly can to accomplish those goals. And that's what makes a good team of people working together. And that's important to me that we, we have a lot of things to watch and take care of, but our job is not to tell you what you can and can't do. My job is to try to help you accomplish those goals.
Beyond that, Mr. Chair, I would ask permission to be absent from our next meeting. We've got a life event coming up that will require my being elsewhere.
Certainly. And that, you'll be away on the, from the 12th through the 23rd, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, yeah, very good, thank you. Mr. Lawson, Mrs. Woodward?
I don't really have a whole lot. I would like to thank the mayor, downtown looks amazing. I have gotten a few phone calls. It just looks amazing, thank you. Thank you for all your insight, making that always beautiful for everybody.
We've had a lot of crew working hard.
Yes, you have, I've seen them.
They've done a wonderful job planting all the flowers. I think the impatience at all the gateways look outstanding and no one keeps things mowed and watered better than our crews, so. And it does take a lot of people to do that.
Yep, I see them out there watering almost every morning.
Yeah.
Takes a lot to keep them alive.
We're certainly setting the example. When I see some of the businesses that maybe aren't doing the best job of keeping their landscaping up and their weeds pulled and their lawns mowed, I do think to myself, well, they can't say the city doesn't set an example because we certainly do try to keep everything meticulous, so. Very thankful for your comments, but it's owed to a lot of people.
Well, I get a lot of comments, so I want to make sure you know.
And that's what had happened in the past, is that, yeah, we, we have flowers up there, but then they weren't maintained. Well, this time, through a lot of generous donors, we have money set aside specifically to make sure those flowers are watered every day, and that's why they maintain their beautiness. To add on to that, I just want to remind people, we have, we have a lot of nice amenities in this town. We have two quality golf courses, we have tennis, we have pickleball, we have putter, putter golf, we have swimming, swimming, we have excellent restaurants.
Dog park.
We have a dog park, yeah, but, yeah, that's, needs to be reminded. And we have, between the city and the county, we have 21, 22 parks to hike, so, you know, I hear occasional grumblings, there's nothing to do. You got to get out of your house and look around, there's plenty to do around our wonderful little town, and it's all maintained very well and, and thanks to the, all those city people and the park people and the county for making sure the, all those are maintained in a quality fashion, so.
To piggyback on that, this past weekend, there was plenty to do. I noticed downtown, there was a band at Foundation Plaza.
Yeah, right.
The Ashland County Fairgrounds was full of different kinds of events.
Yeah.
So there was, and I would imagine that's going to be all summer, kind of like.
I think so.
Yeah.
And that was a Dora event.
Yeah, it was.
And no problems.
Yeah. Did you want to piggyback?
I don't want to piggy, I don't like to piggyback. I don't enjoy that.
May not be able to carry him.
I'm, I always end up at the bottom of that. So it is summertime and that means grass grows naturally quite rapidly during this spring season, so, you know, I get calls every year, this person's not taking care of their property. Don't, don't hesitate to let me know because a lot of times, the city doesn't know until we tell them. It's not like, there's, there's nobody going around actually looking for those problem areas, so, you know, keep, keep those emails and, and calls coming and, and every one of them is, is addressed. So we do, we always make sure that, myself and the other council members always make sure we contact either the mayor or the engineer to make sure that the proper channels, in some cases, I will mention that if we have trouble, it takes time sometimes to locate the owner, the responsible party. And, and through that process, sometimes the yard might get a little high before it gets addressed, but we'll get there. Just don't hesitate to let us know of those problem areas so we can address them. So, that's all I got.
All right, very good. With that, Mayor, I'll turn it over to you. Thank you, and thank you for all those compliments because there's a lot of people that'll hear those and, and be appreciative that you're taking notice because there really are a lot of people working hard to keep things looking the way they are. And one of the things that impresses me the most here in our city is how well we are doing maintaining all the gateways into the city. When you go out US 250 to 42, the intersection there, you look how manicured everything is. You look at Center Street out by the 6511 intersection where our A signs are, we're the ones that mow that so pristine, and you can see that at every entryway. And you know that does give our city a very clean and kept look. And there's folks that that's pretty much their full-time job now during the summer months when we bring on seasonals and so on, to mow, and they do a wonderful job, plus weed, plus water, and all those things do take time, so I appreciate that you guys support us investing in that because it is making a difference. Incidentally, and I'll throw in there, I am amazed at how many people will come up to me that I don't recognize, that tell me they're in town, they've been gone for several years, they were visiting family, and they just can't believe what the city looks like. So kudos to the people of Ashland. The, I only have a couple of items here to mention, I'll throw in with this talk of beautifying the city. Right now, there's a major project under, going underway in Congrove Park. We are adding a sidewalk along the park, we're going to add a sidewalk to the playground equipment to improve that park even further. We're working with Centerra to possibly remove their chain link fence that's rusted and leaning and full of brush to replace it at our expense with a vinyl fence. That park is getting a lot of attention these days. With the new pickleball courts and it being one of our primary baseball fields, that whole area has a lot of traffic and we want to make it look very best, especially when we're hosting outside teams and so on. So we're going to get that taken care of, and I will tell you that here, hopefully toward the end of the month of June, we hope to dedicate that field and give it an official name. And I can't reveal all the details yet, but we did have a donor step forward that's willing to put up a plaque in honor of a famous Ashland citizen. From our past, and it'll be a good name I think you'll all be very excited about. As far as I know, Dennis Miller didn't play baseball, so don't expect it to be the Dennis Miller Field, but I will tell you that, stay tuned, you'll be interested in seeing when the time comes. Also, this Sunday night, I believe, is the first concert at the Band Shell, right? And it'll be the first opportunity for people to go into the newly renovated bathrooms at the Myers Band Shell as well as park in the new parking lot. It should be finished by that time. It's not paved yet, but it's still a good parking lot and it'll be behind Myers Band Shell, where the old house used to stand that we stored all of our equipment in and so on. So that's coming as well. So we're continuing to make those little modifications everywhere we can, and when it comes to property maintenance, we continue, we're waiting, we've got a list of about eight more properties that we hope to demolish here soon and remove that are not able to be rehabbed. I guess when I say that, I always think, well, if you had enough money, you can pretty much rehab anything, but most would agree with those, they can't be rehabbed, and those will be coming down in a variety of neighborhoods. So one by one, we're chiseling away and hopefully cleaning up the city. I also want to remind everyone that beginning July 1st, our public transit hours will be 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM on Saturdays. our public transit hours will be eight AM to nine PM on Saturdays. Eight AM to nine PM on Saturdays. We previously have been eight AM to, I'm sorry, I did that backwards. It's previously been nine PM, we're changing it to six PM on Saturday nights. So it'll be eight AM to six PM on Saturday nights, all right? And then, of course, just remind you that we're closed on city holidays. So I don't think that shocks anyone. And I believe that's all I have tonight. Oh, no, one other item. June fifteenth is Father's Eve. And for the last three years, through the generosity of the Norma Foundation, we've been able to host breakfast pizza with dad at Foundation Plaza on the morning of June fifteenth, Father's Eve, the day before Father's Day. We encourage all dads and stepdads and granddads and every kind of dad to come out with their family and enjoy free breakfast pizza breakfast. The hours are eight AM till ten AM. The pizza, of course, is provided by Ohio Fire Pizza, we set up right there on Foundation Plaza. If it were to get stormy and rain, I don't know exactly where we'll go, but we'll have some backup plan at that time if it isn't just inside the restaurant. But we encourage people to come. So far, we've only had beautiful mornings and we've had a lot of good times with a lot of dads of all ages. You have young dads that have their babies in strollers and you have dads that have their dads there bringing their walkers or wheelchairs with them. So dads come in every shape and size, so we'd love to have you there as well. And that's funded by the Norma Foundation. So I think that's it now. All right.
Steve, before we go, I forgot one other amenity. We have a first-class refurbished movie theater downtown, so wanted to remind people to take, check it out. Comfy seats, good popcorn, good movies, so.
Good. All right, great, thank you, Mr. Miller, and Mr. Miller. With that, we'll move right to comments from our audience. If anyone has anything they'd like to address council with, you're more than welcome to step up to the podium and state your name, what ward you live in, for the record.
Uh-oh.
Good evening, Mr. McNeely.
What do you mean, uh-oh? My name is Dave McNeely, I live in Ward One on Samaritan Avenue. And I just wanted to kind of have a conversation with you all. We've had a thing at our house with the water department this past couple of weeks. Received a phone call from them a couple of weeks ago and they wanted access to the house to change out my water meter. And so, they came, they came this past week and they changed out the old meter and put in the new digital meter. And in the process of that, when they closed my main shut-off water valve, that began to leak, probably a ninety-year-old galvanized valve. They tried to tighten the packing nut, and that didn't stop the leak and so they told me I needed to get a plumber. And so I got a plumber and then in the process of the plumber trying to replace the valve, the galvanized pipe coming into the house split. And so, they were, they were able to temporarily put a sleeve on that and keep us with water, but now I'm facing thousands of dollars of contractor coming in and digging up my front yard and digging up my sidewalk because it goes all the way to the curb in order to replace the galvanized pipe coming into my house. And so, I was very shocked at the whole process and the whole thing. I never called and asked for the meter. I was just told that they needed to get in and replace it. And so I did and thought it would be no big deal, but now it's ended up costing me several thousand dollars. So, that's my case. I think that, you know, we need to think about how we resolve this and look at this because I live on Samaritan and I promise you, all of my neighbors have ninety-five-year-old houses with ninety-five-year-old galvanized pipe coming in. And when you, when you do one like that, you're going to do them all like that. And so, that's a pretty significant expense for us to incur. And so, it's been, it's been quite a week of tap dancing and trying to make this, put this all back together, so. If you have any suggestions or any thoughts on that, I'm trying to be very calm about it.
Well, thank you. And let me say first and foremost, it would be a lot for any of us to absorb.
Yeah.
And so, thank you for bringing this to our attention. I'll hand it over to Director Paxton to address, as he's in charge of the water department, but thank you.
Sure, you're welcome.
I will not comment on that in public meetings.
Yeah.
I'm still reviewing it.
Okay. Larry?
There were some circumstances and issues with the meter. But I have not completely investigated the.
Certainly.
I'm planning on speaking to Dave about that.
Okay.
I want to make sure that I have everything in order.
Absolutely, certainly, I respect that, yeah. And it sounds like there were some special circumstances?
Yeah, there was.
Okay, very good. But we appreciate your bringing that to our attention.
Yeah. You know, again, as for the public, I would say, as, I know we're looking at changing some of these things out, the water meters and getting into the modern age and those are all wonderful things to do, but anytime you try to retrofit the modern to the ancient, the ancient usually wins and so we have to be mindful of that, so thank you for your time.
And I am correct in saying that falls to your department, correct, Larry?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Dave.
Anyone else like to address council? Good evening, sir.
Good evening again. We, like a month ago, me and my girlfriend went to, I think, Portside Park to feed the ducks and stuff and we had like some issue with some teenagers falling like stuff in the ponds and stuff. When I saw, and it wasn't our kids and stuff, they went and bashed ski masks and stuff. And I called the police about it. And we went straight home, we saw like three or four cop cars going down it too. Then a couple of weeks later, on a Facebook group, they say teenagers down at Portside Park still starting their stuff.
We do have park security that's supposed to be monitoring all that, but we also have a police officer here as well and I know they drive through, so we'll just have to keep a better eye on it.
Okay, one more thing. June twenty-seventh is TOS one for Special Olympics. I know the police officers joined us for the TOS ones. I appreciate them for doing that, even though I won't be in it. And that's all.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else? All right, seeing none, then I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Lawson.
Aye.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned, thank you all for coming.